Okay, hour being after seven o'clock, we have a full board, first item. Minutes?
Minutes.
Are they done?
Of course, they're done.
All right, so what are you doing next?
Anna.
Man, home and away, you are the boss, huh? We don't have any other paper copies, please?
I'm sorry.
So this is it?
That's the lot, I do have paper copies.
Yeah, I know, but typically still the rest of the board.
He should put copies.
I put copies in their folder.
Oh, okay. All right. We have an A and R from 182 Summer Street, and... We're giving it up, I guess. Anybody here for?
Beth.
Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Beth Worling, Planning and Project Manager with the Kraft Group, representing FXP LLC. The A and R before you is showing the subdivision of Lot A comprised of approximately 87,657 square feet and locate... Oops, sorry, bad.
No, I just noticed, keep going.
Okay. It's located entirely in Wellpole, and then Lot B comprised of approximately 63,524 square feet. We're looking to retain, if this is approved, we'll be retaining Lot B, and then the remaining parcel in Wellpole will remain with the current owner.
Okay. Then realizing, so Fox Row we don't care about.
Mm-hmm.
You're just cutting it off.
Yep.
And you're changing nothing because it's existing frontage of 6180, but you still keep the proper amount of square footage, so. Al, you looked at this, right?
I did. We had a couple of changes, they were excellent, and very fast in making them. Plan is very good.
Thank you.
Okay, does that mean it's okay to... Very good, like?
As in, I recommend endorsement.
All right, so everybody understands, they're just cutting the back piece off with certain effect that they still have frontage, but that's what they had before, so. And they're taking over...
It's a standing lot.
What do you call it? Piece in Foxborough, so. All right, does anybody have any questions? I'll make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure we set it in the right spot.
Hands up, yeah. She's still here.
She just ran out.
What'd you sign with?
We had ones that were all bent over.
No, no, I mean just now.
Well, I signed this, but I never had one this good.
That one's okay?
Yeah, where'd you get the money to buy them?
From Marguerite Construction.
Oh, you didn't. All right, hold on a second. Next item, continuing public caring for 383 Fisher's, case 2407. Kate, you got a folder for me or not?
Yep, I do. I certainly do, who knows when Sunday.
All right. I think last...
A little feisty tonight.
Who me? When Truax comes in, it's...
He was excited, he did, took his breath away.
I know. Okay, from last time, we have the applicant, we had a few things, one from the police, I mean fire, one from Cal. First one is, the Wapo Fire Department finds a plan acceptable for their operations and no further comments, so that one's done, and we have one from Cal.
Mr. Chairman, yes, September 12th, I wrote a memo and said everything from my prior letter was all taken care of, and then I noted that a fourth sheet will be added to the endorsement set to put the decisions or the conditions from the decision on there. And then I've asked that the applicant submitted paper, well, everything's going to be paper on these now, but a draft to me before endorsement. There's one thing I didn't put in the memo, I had printed the plan set to scale, the draftsman set it up as an 18 by 24, the 24 by 36 is that we've been getting, actually didn't scale. Does the board desire to leave it as an 18 by 24 and sign an endorsement set at that size?
What's it say in our little bookie?
I honestly don't know, it probably says 24 by 36, but they could easily reformat that on the endorsement set.
Well, the only reason I do that is, if it's in the book, you don't want to leave, just in case someone goes, "No, I don't like it." It'll be on the site plan, all right? Just take a quick look.
Because you don't have your laptop.
Interesting, Cal, so far all it does is tell you the scale. I don't see scale in here, I mean, I don't see...
Size?
Size, I see scale, which is they got in the locust, but I don't see the paper size. I know most times everybody does it because the building's so big.
With the board's...
Do you find it?
...permission, we'll square that away with the applicant. When you sign it, you'll get them one way or the other.
Okay.
My preference, I think, would be to have them on 24 by 36 sheet, all the rest of them are, so I don't think we should bog down too much in that, everything else has been well addressed.
Okay. I don't have any other comments from any of the boards, anybody from the audience on 383 Fisher? All right. Phil, Paul, you all set?
I'm all set.
Kate?
All set.
Phil?
All set.
John?
Yes. All set.
Your turn.
All set.
No, I know, John, I'm just saying.
All set.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
You don't dare say. Okay. All right, so everything's been done to satisfaction, what's required, a decision or...
Just, all I need is the special comments, if you need them, next special conditions, if you want them.
I don't think we have any special.
I don't think so either, so I'm all set.
So, I'll make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, can I add that based upon what Cal has asked to do before it gets to him? For what gets to us? Can you put that, we'll put that in the motion?
Second.
Okay, all right, motion is second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, five, zero, zero. I'll have to run before we change our mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, oh, almost there. Cabon, we have a continued public caring, 2404 for a site plan, and we also have continued public caring, 2405 for a special permit.
Can I have the comments back?
Did you what?
Can I have their comments back?
I got one.
Should be just police and, oh, sorry, fire and Cal.
No, that's Hash Brown. No, I don't have that.
All right.
Comments, will you say?
All right, I'm all set.
Wait a minute. What do you need, do we need fire?
Comments that you read.
For the last one? Oh, I'm talking, we're on the...
Oh, no, he's got them right there, the new one.
Oh, okay. So moving on to the last time, we had the cabon, and one of them, the fire department, dated the 12th of September, and you've addressed all their comments, so they're all set. Police has indicated on September 4th, they do not have any public safety concerns related to traffic on this case, so they're all set there. And you sent us something from CONCOM, conservation land disturbance permit, this is dated not September 4th. There you go. This is from, oh, it's from Landis, I'm sorry, it's not reading right. The Conservation Commission issued a land disturbance permit for 2216 Boston Providence Highway on 626 and on 612 based upon the revised plan of 624. The applicant should provide conservation with their letter outlining the revisions made since the 624, and provide a final copy of the plan, okay? So that's, actually it should be you, not us, we just get a copy. The Board of Health, Board of Health, warning maniously that the, reiterates comments from the June 4th meeting, they have no health concerns, but they remind the applicant to submit a septic design to the Health Department.
Yep, we've submitted an application and it's under review right now.
Okay. This was 9/4, so you've probably done it since. From the Building Commissioner, Cabon, case 2404, 2405, classification use of parking, this letter is intended to clarify the use and the reduction of required parking for the cabon on Route 1. The main difference between storage or parking of motor vehicles, car storage is more focused on long-term protection maintenance, while the parking garage is designed for intermediate, short-term use. The use of this building would be consistent with car storage, it falls under warehouse for extended period of time, the warehouse falls under parking count five, which is one space per thousand. It can only be reduced by waiver from the zoning. I think that's what you had?
Yep, yep, we identified it as a warehouse with parking code five for requirements.
Sew and Water, August 20th, Sew and Water discussed the reference project at the last meeting, commission commented and read and noted. Whatever.
Yeah, what does that supposed to mean?
Well, it's from their chairman, he's very articulate. And the last one I'm down from anything we got is from Cal.
Mr. Chairman, delivered a memorandum to the board September 12th, there were no outstanding plan review items, with one exception, the last time we had asked, because it's in the aquifer special permit, we'd suggested that they provide a floor plan and a detail for a fireproof containment cabinet, spill containment cabinet. They did submit that, with this resubmission, they submitted a floor plan showing where they would go and the type of cabinet they would use. So in my memorandum, I suggest that if that is included in the plan set, then we don't need a special condition requiring it, if it is not, then I would. The only other thing of my approval items, I once again mention that the site plan and special permit conditions have to be on a separate sheet on the endorsement set, and my letter comment 17 could also be a special condition, which basically outlines the fact that they'll need a sewer, not a sewer, a water service connection out on Route, both water and fire service connection. That permit will be in the town's name, but I want to be clear that the applicant has to do all the necessary items to gain that permit. We'll file it, but they have to provide the traffic management plan and a plan suitable to mass DOT. That's it.
Okay. Let's start with Cal.
It is.
To the plan now, that is the number of parking spaces necessary? Does that reduce the number of parking spaces on the plan?
I think the letter was written a little confusingly, but the requirement that we agreed on with Jim was parking code five, one space per 1,000, and that's what we provide.
I think at the last hearing through you, Mr. Chairman, of course, there was some discussion about trying to reduce it, but I don't think you can without variance, I guess.
Right, correct.
No, I don't think I have any other comments.
Phil?
Yeah, so to you, so would you be good at adding the sheets about the hazardous waste layout to the plan?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Doing that, that would be...
Yeah, because I think we'll have to add a sheet in for all the conditions, too, so we'll...
So that would be, that would be good, to have everything right there.
Yep.
And I do want to, see, I did notice that you pulled back the snowy area from Route 1.
Yes.
So thank you for doing that, so I don't have any other comments, I think it's a good plan.
Thank you.
Nothing new.
Nothing old.
Nothing old.
Nothing borrowed. Paul?
Same.
Same. All right, now, Cal, I'm just reading what you had in here about more than household quantities, but you're not asking, you're not asking more than household quantities, correct?
Correct.
And if you did, you'd have to go through a whole other permit process or something, through what, the Board of Health, through something, you'd have to file everything. So they really wouldn't need this, if they do decide to go beyond it, they would have to file, I think, the Board of Health with all that stuff, right?
Did, so, Mr. Chairman, forgive me, these have been going for some time, was, did you provide any list of materials that you were going to store on this, for this one?
Paul, do you mind taking a minute?
I didn't think they were going to store anything.
I thought the same, just wax and...
Yeah, just...
Car wash.
Yeah, wax, car wash.
My name is Paul Coats, I'm with Dario Designs, we're the architect for the project. The storage is really just for the materials to wash the cars.
Yes.
It's just soap and things like that, there are some chemicals, degreasers for engines, and those are the ones that will be stored in the fireproof containers, but the quantities are low, I mean, this isn't a full grown, you know, full-blown car wash, it's only for detailing the cars that are stored.
I understand, but if it's more than household quantities, then it goes into the next, spins on to the next, which end up, I think at the Board of Health, they got to go through the whole list, right?
Yeah, I think they do, I'm not exactly sure how that goes, however, with the special permit, I believe you're allowed to do it.
But they'd have to list everything out.
Right.
If you want the special permit, more than household quantity, you have to list everything you're going to put there.
Right.
You haven't done that yet, right?
Well, we have a list of all the, we have a list of the chemicals or the products that will be stored.
Did we get that list?
That wasn't asked, it was just asked that we provide storage for the products.
Okay, but what happens in our aquifer, you need to tell us what you're storing and how much, what the quantity is. Okay, I don't want to say unique, but there's been a couple other guys up and down Route 1 who rent buildings, they'll submit a whole list of what's there, and get it all approved, and say how they're going to do it, just in case they get a tenant comes in, so you got 1,000, boom, boom, boom.
Right.
So, do you have a list of that, or...
I dread, the client doesn't have a list of how, the quantity yet, because, you know, as a new business, you know, he's not going to be carrying a lot of stock in this facility.
My recommendation is it will be granted based upon household quantities, if you want to increase it, you got to come back.
Okay. I'll reach out to the client and get the quantities, but...
But if you want, you want to finish up tonight, this is what we write, and if anything changes, just so that we're proven based upon household quantities.
Correct.
We can't not let you have...
Oh, understood, and we've explained that to the client, and we will keep that, you know, quantity, you know, it isn't like he's going to store...
But if he wants more, then he'll have to come down here and do his thing.
Yes, understood.
All right.
Thank you.
That make sense?
Yep.
Anybody, questions, comments from the public regarding the cabon, either one? All right, make a motion to close. You all?
Oh, no, I'm just coming back to take notes.
Oh, okay. Call the other guy, don't say anything, once we're ready to close, you get out quick. All right, I'll make a motion to close the site plan, okay, I've got a second, John, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to close the special permit.
Second.
Second, Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are standing ones, Kate, right? And the only special con... Okay, first off, the site plan's easy, I make a motion to approve the site plan as resubmitted and...
It's revised?
Hmm?
It's revised? It's revised?
As revised, yeah. Second from John, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion on the special permit, but I want to add that this special permit is based upon household quantities, and then anything more than household quantities, they will have to seek additional approvals as required. That make sense?
Yep, makes sense to me.
Second.
Second from Phil, any discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Run. Next one, Hash Brown, we're already up there. Okay, with the hour being after 7:08 for continuing public caring for site plan on 2408 South Street for Hash Brown, and after 7:09, Hash Brown, 2409, special permit now open, and... Is your name, sir? Identify for the audience, please.
Rob Truax.
That's enough. All right, what we have here is, last time we had a bunch of stuff, we had to get squared away, and I'll read it, and if you have, and we'll get to you in a sec, Rob, what you have, water and sewer. On August 20th, the Board of Sewer and Water Commission has discussed the above referenced subjects at their last meeting on August 19, 2024. The commission commented, read and noted, so whatever that means, it's read and noted.
Good to know. Whatever that means.
September 4th, from the Police Department, the Police Department does not have any safety concerns relative to traffic, I would hope not. From the Wapo Fire Department on August 8th, it said that they'll work with the applicant on the hydrant and the roadway surface marking, and everything else meets their requirements. Was there something on the hydrant, or was that about, do you remember?
We have a hydrant on the site now.
Was it, was...
It's within 100, within so many feet of the building, that's what he wanted.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an old one, in the fire department, and the last one I have, any town board comments, is from Cal.
Mr. Chairman, delivered a memo September 18th, that very few items left in the memo, item number nine, I note we still don't have a lighting plan. I think Mr. Truax has asked that it be included at the time of building permit. One very minor plan revision, adding a four-inch water gate along the line, that fire line that goes out to the building where it splits, and then similar to the last one, because it's aquifer special permit, I have recommended a condition be put in there, and it's in item two about the same type of thing, that there's, if there's more than household quantities, hazardous materials to be stored in a flammable cabinet with containment some sufficiently sized for the volume stored, and that is because this is in the aquifer special permit area. I believe early Mr. Truax did provide a list, so I think they are going to store more than household quantities.
That list was what they store in the building, it's already permitted and built, so this building is going to have new occupants, he's going to rent it out, so he doesn't have any tenants at this time, so each tenant will have to come up with what they plan to put in the building.
All right, but just so you understand, is, because it's a whole new site plan, that one isn't granted.
Correct. No, if they come up with something that's beyond that, they're going to have to deal with it, as a tenant.
Even what Ian has now, if he's got something, more than what he had before.
Correct.
Okay, because I think, you've never done anything for Murphy, right?
Who?
Jake or Donnell?
No.
See, what they do for rental is up on Route 1, they got a whole list, they do, the reason they do the list is, the tenant comes in, wants to move in, you can't do that, you can't use that particular chemical, he'll lose it, he can go to Sharon, because this could take eight months.
Oh, so he just puts a generic list out there?
Yeah.
I got you.
So, but...
Lesson, something to learn.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea, because...
Not a bad idea.
Because, you know, guy's biting to get in there, and you're losing for that.
You did provide a list.
Yeah, we did provide a list.
Does this mean anything to you?
That was more just a generic list, and that's what Ian Brown technically stores within his building, for his use, but like I said, he's going to have new tenants in this back building, and if they come in with something different from that list, then they're going to have to go through the proper process to get that permitted, whatever that is, they may have to go through Board of Health as well. So he doesn't, we don't know who's going in this building, this is a spec building for, you know, contractor base.
Okay, now, move over, Paul, questions, comments?
No, other than what has already been brought up, Jack, no, I don't see.
I do not have anything new.
Okay, Phil?
No, other than getting the lighting plan, it sounds like that's all right, if it's submitted during the building permit, or should we be requiring it?
We'll give it to you before the building permit's issued. Once he goes in and buys the building, he'll put the lighting contractor on board for the lights, and he'll get a lighting plan, it'll be well before the building permit.
Do we need to make that one of the conditions?
Yes.
Getting a lighting plan, then.
Absolutely.
But my view is, the lighting plan is really, it's a revision to what you already have there, if you think about it, right?
To some extent, yeah, we're adding it in the back.
I understand, but it is, we're taking the whole site, but this is one, the whole site's in play, but the back building, so this will be a revision to the lighting plan.
It'll be an add-on to the old lighting plan.
Yeah, well, we want to make sure when you do submit it, it's coordinated or whatever, so it doesn't conflict with what's already there. Phil, anything else?
That's all.
John?
No, the lighting plan is basically the only thing I was thinking of, so...
Okay. Anyone from the audience have any questions, comments relative to Hash Brown on South Street? Okay, well, my comment is the lighting plan we talked about and what Cal wanted. And we'll do the same thing, Kate, I think the same thing for the household quantities for the back building until such time they change, same condition we just had before, and with special conditional lighting plan prior to building permit?
Endorsement of building permit? Endorsement or building permit?
You want to look at it before endorsement?
No, because I don't think you'll have the building bought out before we endorse it, I'm all right with it for building permit.
You want to have it bought out, you know, thank you?
Yeah, he's not, this building's not, he probably not gonna start construction on the building till spring, but he's gonna do the utility work this fall. So that, because I believe they're gonna pave South Street next year, is what Kyle has indicated. So we're gonna open the road up this fall and get the utilities off the street for the water. So that'll have the winter to settle up and to pass.
All right, so we got the household quantities and the lighting plan prior to building permits, and the gate valve that's on Kyle's.
Yeah, we'll work that out with Kyle for gate valves.
That one we can do before endorsement.
Before endorsement, yes. All right, okay, I'll make a motion to close twenty-four oh eight site plan?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to close twenty-four oh nine, South Street?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, make a motion to approve with the caveat that the lighting plan will be issued, including the set prior to the building permit, for the, for the site plan, so make that, that whole thing as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so for this, um, special permit, we'll put in, the only special condition we'll have is that household quantities. This will be whatever, however we were the last time, Kate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's the only one I think we got, so, uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay.
Great, thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Gonna kind of miss him.
Wow, this is a record for you.
Kinda, kinda miss you.
I got a record for you guys, three for three.
For number four.
All right. Just that carb on. It's okay. That's done, and, all right, we're at the seven, past seven-ten mark?
Yep.
All right, the hour being after seven-ten, we have a continued public hearing for West End, case twenty-four oh three, Weston Spring Streets. With that being said, the hearing is open, and everyone from the West End come on up, then we'll start.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Nadine Bailey, representing the owner applicant, Weston Residences LLC. Uh, last time we were here was July eighteenth, and there's been some changes to the plan since we met at that time, which I'll have the project team will go over. But, um, the, uh, my client wants to be a good neighbor, so I'm gonna address some of the community comments that, um, we received, that they put a nice presentation together the last time we were here, and I do want to address some of those uh, comments. The, um, biggest one was, I think, the pet situation. We are gonna allow pets on the property, um, they will have specific waste receptacles uh, located throughout the property. Where they're gonna be located, I, it, we don't know at this time, but they're going to be located on the property, and they will be managed by the property manager on site.
Sorry, could you check, I, I couldn't hear the beginning of that. You're gonna have on-site?
Yeah, so, um, one of the concerns was where with a pet, pet, anybody that has pets in the property, pets, I'm sorry, yes. And we are gonna have a, I guess you wanna call it a pet park, or, or, or some type of little areas all throughout the property where, um, they can walk the pets, and they'll have, um, waste, uh, pet waste receptacles that will be managed by the, you know, emptied by the property manager on site. One of the other comments was, and I'm not sure if there's anybody here that can address this, maybe when the public goes after I can answer the question better, but, um, there was a comment about the CBD zoning has its limitations, looking at ninety-five West. And I just wanted to point out that the limitations, well, the project with ninety-five West was there were variances that were granted for parking and height. This project, we are not looking for any variances, we're gonna comply with the letter of the law. So to compare the two projects, I would say it's kind of like apples to oranges, not apples to apples. But if I misconstrued that comment from last time, I apologize, and I can better address it if anybody from the public wants to, um, you know, go over that, um, again. Let's see. The, um, reduced construction hours of operation was a topic that was addressed last time, and to that I can say that the planning board has a standard condition that they will probably impose if and when site plan is approved, and we will comply with those, that condition, uh, during construction. Again, there were some comments about retail space, we said this last time, but just to reiterate, there will be no retail space, it's going to be office, commercial space. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Like I said, um, we've met with different departments since the last time we met, um, Doug Anino, who is the project architect, is gonna go next, and he can go over what we've done since the last time we met.
Good evening, everyone, Doug Anino from Anino Associates, we're architects in North Attleboro, Massachusetts. One of the questions last meeting was building heights. Uh, what we did was, we looked at the average building height, and I think everyone, uh, here has a copy of that study, but we studied the building heights across each elevation, um, and we found that the only building height that really, uh, was a problem was the tower. In these elevations, we lowered the tower, um, to maintain, uh, the building height under fifty-two feet. Uh, we met with the building, building inspector and reviewed this, uh, with him, and he agreed with us. He said, said we, uh, met all the requirements for building height. He looked at the averages and, um, basically said we were right on. So we're, we're underneath the fifty-two feet everywhere, um, which was one of the, one of the questions. Uh, another comment or another change since the last time we really, sure.
Yeah, I'm just making sure we're on the right plan, so, so you're, the plan we have is from, uh, August twenty-first, right, is that?
Yeah, the latest.
Latest plan. I know last time there was some discussion about if we've seen it or not, so I'm just making sure we're working, I'm looking at the...
Yeah, that you should have an elevation study in that, that's that.
Just sorry, just wanted to make sure.
I go to an elevation study, would you?
I don't think there was any in the plan. Might have been a different study, a separate document.
It shouldn't have been in the set, but the chairman will allow I have some handouts I can give to you.
Thank you.
Candy stores.
Help yourself. That's what gets us through these meetings.
We took the, uh, original elevations and sort of highlighted the, the heights of the building and, and assigned some numbers to them. Give you a good understanding of where we were at. On the last couple pages. And then we just put, you guys know this, but we put the definition from your bylaw of building height, which is average mean grade at the elevation to the top of the flat roof deck, or the midpoint of a gable, or a gambrel.
Well, we require the architectural, but we don't rule on the height, as you know. You get this approved, you go down the hall. Too high, you go...
Re-chop, yes. Uh, but that was a concern of, of the, uh, butters last meeting, so I just wanted to sort of show them diagrammatically where we're at. We also added a pergola trellis that runs, uh, the corner and wraps around the front of the building, to emphasize that, uh, sort of lower area, so where the intersection of Spring and West, there's a, uh, a trellis that surrounds that upper and lower walkway. Uh, it adds some details and, and really keeps us within the parameters of the setbacks that the zoning bylaw stipulates. That's, I think that's about it for my presentation, we haven't changed too much architecturally. Kept the same materials, same, same articulation of the facade, and, um, same fenestration, so it stayed pretty, pretty much the way it was. We changed the designation for retail to commercial on, uh, that first level deck above the parking.
All set architectural side, anything?
You want to move on to site?
Yes.
Hello again? Um, since our last hearing, um, we've had additional conversations with Carl and the fire department. Um, from that has stemmed the inclusion of a new, um, pickup and drop-off lane at the top of the plan off of Westview, or, or at the top of West Street, um, in Plan View. That way, uh, trucks can easily pull in and out for, um, dropping off people, packages. And in the lower level, around the dumpster, which is kind of in the middle of the plan, on the lower level, we made some modifications to the layout just to allow for, um, a three-point turn from a fire truck if it were to enter, um, into the lower level parking area. Also added some additional signage for no parking fire lane. Otherwise, I don't believe there's been any substantive changes to the site layout plan since we were last here, lots of little details, notes.
Could you point out, so the, the drop-off on West Street, could you?
Yes. So on the east side, we'll be exit only time, um, we carry the crosswalk through the edge of the right way to maintain the same existing, um, pedestrian path, with three-foot grass strip, five-foot wide sidewalk, crosswalks at both sides of the in and out, designated drop-off line.
So that'd be long enough for three or four cars, fifty, it looks like fifty-four feet?
That's, that's just from the, uh, the ramp to the ramp, so there's a little bit of extra Q and space too. So fifty-four feet, you could fit like three cars within there, and then another car here, here, maybe like five, safely, without traffic. But we don't anticipate this to be a frequent used lane with cars stacking into the road and whatnot, this is just for large trucks that have to drop off some increase. And similarly on the lower level, we tried to improve our, um, large truck turning right of eye. So if a truck were to come in here and park in the designated loading area, uh, they'd have a lot easier time doing a three-point turn out of here. And the previous set plans, uh, from the board, they'll actually keep parking spaces, kind of this general area here. But we've since, uh, re-shaped this just to, uh, improve that.
So, so were you looking for the drop-off point on West Street for delivery trucks, like a UPS delivery, or?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, and, and where, when they went in the building, where is the package, uh, drop-off place in the building exactly?
That would be at this entrance down here, um, off of Spring Street.
Okay.
Look here, wheeling packages down to the parcel area here. So over here, loading space here, a lot more, you can, the parts will drop off, but if the truck was to come off of West Street, it'd just want to park. Or a lot more, uh, easier in and out, turn movement.
No, that's, 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 that's pretty good, I, I, I know someone who lives in other apartment buildings, and it's a huge issue for the big trucks.
Otherwise, that really is it from significant changes since the last time we were here, site-wise, some minor utility water system edits, I think?
Through you, Mr. Chair, of course, Chris, could you go over the, um, because actually on the last set of plans on here, or my, our earlier revision, the, um, crosswalks, and there's some changes to the crosswalk configuration, and, and, and the, you know, the the sidewalks are being added along Spring Street, but, um, there are a few changes to crosswalks, improvements to the safety of the pedestrian crossings and whatnot, um, that would, I think, be beneficial to go over.
Uh, yes, uh, we sat down and had a meeting with Bowman about how to improve pedestrian traffic. And so this is kind of what we came up with based off their feedback. We've kind of, we've, uh, shifted the West Street, uh, crosswalk further to the east, in order to provide separate landings for pedestrians that are going east-west across Spring, at the same time going north-south across West. So that kind of explains this new configuration. Additionally, uh, these, these stripes here are old, are existing, so we have a new stretch, so that's kind of why it looks a little confusing in Plan View. And then we've additionally extended the sidewalks and crosswalks all the way down both sides of Spring Street, and across, and across Clear Pond Drive, um, all the way down to the MBTA commuter parking lot. So this will allow for improved pedestrian, uh, traffic, parking in that lot, heading all the way to the train station, and similarly for any residents, um, at the West End Development, for accessing that, that lot if needed for some reason.
So will you be putting in the, the, the solar-powered lights, the cross, you know, the crosswalk blinking lights? I know, there's a talent thing.
Actually, one of the comments that got brought up in the peer review I received the other day was disporning with the town for advanced pedestrian traffic signs. I'm not sure if that's something that we need to develop or something that we can work together, or if that's something that goes in some other way. At the moment, we're just showing, um, static yellow metal signs for the typical pedestrian crossings, but if there's something, the flashers, lights are
That's the standard signage for them.
But just as a side, I, I would, based on my experience walking around Walpole, I would strongly recommend where whoever does it, that we do have flashing lights on, particularly crossing West Street.
Blow right past you anyways.
Just a beep when I go by.
Yeah.
So that's the standards, what they're showing?
Pardon me?
That's the standard.
Yes.
Standard sign, yeah. So the flashing lights are not a standard?
John? No, it's actually, I, I'd actually like to have Bowman, the peer review, take a, um, a, a see what they have to say, they reviewed it for us, all right, I didn't do the traffic review or the pedestrian crossing review on this. So we can get our peer review to address that.
Yeah, we'll get the, all right, are we, are we all set for the site, any of the changes and all that stuff?
Uh, that's about it.
Okay, that's it, okay.
Jack, if I could, um, I think the Board of Selectmen as road commissioners have to approve the blink, blinking lights and whatever. Probably can recommend it.
Well, it's the same thing, we'll put in the signs that off-site is not us. But because you're doing it, we highly recommend it, so we could say either you're gonna do it, or you go see the selectman, and then come back with the approval, and then we can pick it up from there.
Okay.
That's kind of the way it goes, most people agree to it, and no one has an issue with it. All right, so we did the site and the architectural, so we're on to traffic, right?
But we're gonna come back to this, right, for board, board questions?
Yeah, yeah, they give them the presentation, so we can...
So I'm Elizabeth McChesney, I'm the traffic engineer at Crossman, um, and I did the traffic impact study. Um, since the last meeting, there's been no change to the traffic, um, Bowman had begun... Bowman had begun, they had started their peer review, they started looking at the second set of information that we sent them last time. Since that time, Crossman's received Bowman's letter this week for the outstanding traffic issues and questions raised by Bowman in their peer review. All of those issues have been addressed, according to them. They did put in a stipulation asking for a condition of approval that if the commercial in, if the commercial land use should change to retail, which it's not, it's office use right now, the applicant should reassess the trip generation and analysis. And so their, their last statement was that no further action is needed for the traffic. In terms of responding to a few of the questions from the community last time for traffic, one of the questions was, there was concern that only two hours were studied. Generally for a traffic study, we look at what the land use is and we're going to look at the worst-case conditions. And for residential and office use, we'd look at weekday, AM, and PM. And so we put, we do traffic counts out there from seven to nine AM and then four to six PM on a standard weekday, either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, a non-holiday when school's in session. And from that information, we knew that the peak, peak hours in that location were seven fifteen to eight fifteen AM and four forty-five to five forty-five PM. And so we do our analysis based on worst-case conditions. Let's see, some of the other questions were, and again, the study was prepared following ITE standards and an independent firm, Bowman, looked at our work and found it to be satisfactory and to standard. Another question I think I'd seen was, there was a note that they felt that the study was extrapolated from another study. And I'm not sure where that's coming from, but I think what they might be thinking of is when we do, when we do this, we consider the trip generation by getting that information from ITE trip generation. And that compiles a lot of information from similar studies around the country. And so that's standard, you get those calculations from that reference. I think maybe some other confusion might have been from the fact that when we look at future no-build conditions, we also consider other studies in the area to make sure that our, our information is conservative. So in this case, we looked at data that was in a VAI study for a nearby project. And we just wanted to make sure that we've included that if we needed to. If they felt that traffic was going through our area from theirs, that we would incorporate that. And so we did check that. And that's, I think that kind of covers some of the questions and hopefully, hopefully that answers some questions, if you have any questions or.
Want a question, is Al guy here today?
Yes, he is.
Okay, well, we might as well do this now, knock it off, right?
Sure.
Okay. Bowman Associates? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, yeah, you had a long list of items and?
Not too long. My name? Steven Saragusa, I'm with Bowman Consulting. So we did the initial peer review of the TIS and we presented back in July, last time we met, and we kind of went through a few of the items that we thought needed to just be addressed a little bit further in the response to comments based on what was presented in the TIS. There were also a lot of questions that were brought up, you know, from the public. And I just want to run through a couple of things that we kind of went through and made note of that have been addressed. I think the, one of the bigger things was that pickup-drop-off area. I think that, that's a big concern for a lot of people, not just in Walpole, but in a lot of communities. And I think that having this here in the design of it, knowing the likely use of it, that it is sufficient in terms of width. We did request a bit of additional signage on either side of it in terms of some additional do-not-enter signage for the exit only and then some one-way signage, just so kind of everybody's aware of the circulation there. I know a big thing was sidewalks and with the ADA compliant sidewalks on, along both sides of the site frontage, along West Street and Spring Street, and also on the opposite side of Spring Street, as well as those crosswalk connections that were mentioned earlier. I think they, they addressed those concerns adequately. The site distance, I know, was a big issue at the intersection of Weston Spring. And I believe, and if I'm wrong, let me know, that they did shift the building slightly so that they can maximize the site distance, looking both left from the stop bar along Spring Street onto West. And I think, given the, the new layout of those crosswalks, I think they kind of maximized their site distance looking to the right as much, as best as they could with the vegetation and the wall and, and the train tracks that are out there. And on that note, with the new crosswalk, we did also recommend, so that is the correct signage for a crosswalk. We did recommend some additional advanced signage specifically to the east underneath the overpass so that drivers are well aware of that they're, hey, there is a crosswalk here. Because I don't believe there are any out there currently. And again, advanced signage to the west as well, but certainly to the east where your site distance is, is pretty limited coming down underneath those, those tracks. And the last thing, again, and Ms. McChesney hit on it a little bit, was the trip generation. I know that currently office use is, is the proposed use. And we just want to make it known that, you know, if, if it does change to a retail use, that is a significantly different trip generation. So again, some additional analysis would be needed, but as presented currently in the TIS, and they also made some revisions in their response to comments, we're satisfied with, with what was presented and the new analysis that they, that they presented. So more than happy to answer, any questions from, from the board or from the public if they come up?
John, do you have any questions on the traffic?
Traffic? No.
Okay, Phil?
I have a couple of questions. So one, so the drop-off, we certainly wouldn't want cars to be stopping, going in the right direction on the right-hand side. We wouldn't want cars to be in the left, going across the lane, parking the wrong direction. So I would hope there'd be signage, is that, is that the one-way?
Yeah, and that's, and that was one of our recommendations, was to increase the amount of signage that's out there, rather than just the one-exit-only sign, to really make it known, just a couple of do-not-enter signs on either side of the exit and then enter signs on where they should be entering. So having that as a counterclockwise circulation, making sure that it's known.
And I think that's a very good addition, by the way, having that drop-off space. In, in applicant response 22, I know this isn't you, but it might be, it's come out later on, but it was recommending, and I think this is the applicant made the recommendation, or consider coordinating with the MBTA to allow customers and employees in the proposed commercial spaces to use underutilized space in the MBTA parking lot. I mean, that, that seems like maybe a good thing to look at. I have a lot of other questions on the parking later when we get to that. But I just wanted, since it's in the report, the traffic study report, I just want to bring that out and see what either you or the applicant is thinking about that. I think that's a very good idea, by the way.
An applicant question, for sure.
And then, do you think we need flashing lights at the, for that crosswalk, pedestrian?
So it's certainly not a guidance, it's certainly not a necessity out there. If it, some communities love them, some communities hate them. So I think it's really the recommendation of, of the town, whether that be yourselves or another board or whoever it might be. They definitely increase awareness, for sure. But I do think that just some advanced signage for now would kind of be first step. Typically, you do signage first and then you would look if that's not adequate, if that's not working well enough. You can take a look at what the next thing would be, which would be this rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which is what you're referencing. So I think having, having signage out there to start would be the way to go.
And the town has deployed quite a few of these, by the way. I don't know if it's under the state safe roads program or we're just doing it ourselves, Carl, those, you know, the ones we are installing in the town.
Yes, they've come, a lot, various, various sources. I think the last one we put up was a complete streets funded one that's in front of the United Church.
And I just want to say, having a son who got hit in the crosswalk at one of our intersections as a pedestrian, I really recommend those lights because people don't, you know, people go very fast and they don't always see a pedestrian. So wherever it's practical, I know it's a town thing, but I'm just, I'm just speaking for myself on that. But I think, I think, you know, thank you for the, you know, I read through the, your study and I think you answered everything, so, thank you.
There's a question. Amongst the signs you mentioned at the exit, is one of them concerning a left turn or is that an issue?
So not currently, we did not recommend a no-left turn at that.
I'm assuming most of the traffic would normally go right anyways, but is that an issue that should be considered?
I think the site distance would be sufficient out there, actually, from that, you know, given the location of it in order to make the left turn. You know, you're, you're definitely increased site distance looking back underneath the train tracks over there. So I don't see that being a huge safety concern. However, if that is something that you'd recommend, I think that's your purview.
Thank you.
Okay, all set, Kate?
I don't know if that would be for you or the applicant, but can you just clarify? I'm not sure I heard it correctly. So the loop is for, intended for like package deliveries, correct?
That's our understanding.
But yet, didn't they say the packages go around the bend down the bottom?
I will defer to the applicant.
Yes. Yes, right at the entrance off Spring Street is where the.
So doesn't it make sense that the package drop-off would be near where the packages are dropped off?
Well, so we have an additional loading area underneath right here. This, this is the closest loading area for the parcels location. But if trucks wanted to stay on West Street, rather than make that turn down Spring into the side, could bring in here, they could have a nice in and out and then just have a brief walk.
And does the lower, I call it the lower area, the other, the true package area, does that have signage that tells them that's where? So I guess what I'm trying to get at is whether it's the top one or the bottom one, I think it should be marked that it is intended for deliveries so that someone doesn't camp out there. You know, someone decides it's easier to park there, that lives there and they, even though it's supposed to be a, so I would think there should be some sort of signage that says, you know, fifteen-minute max or, and package deliveries, and then have another directs, somehow directing them to the correct package delivery so that if they don't want to park up top and walk around, because I know, I mean, just use Amazon for an example, they go wherever they want. So if it's marked, I had to buy a sign for my own house that tells them not to leave it on, you know what I mean, the wrong place. So I think it has to be marked because they do whatever they want if it's not blatantly spelled out.
That's a great comment.
And there's also a need, though, for drop-off, for somebody dropping off a friend or a relative at the unit or picking someone up, I mean, that's a.
But that's why it has to have a limited timeframe so that someone doesn't take it on as their own.
But I think it has to, maybe the signage needs to address both of those needs.
That's what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, just so everyone understands, they can put all the signs they want, but we have no.
No, I understand, but I think you have to spell it out for them.
They, that's for their own. They should, they should already had that in there for their own protection. Anything else, Kate?
That's it.
Paul?
I'm not sure if it ties into a traffic site, but was there any use around on the corner of Weston Spring for any type of people being out there? Didn't I, didn't, didn't I hear on the first time around that there was going to be some seating area or anything like that?
I think what you mean is the rooftop pavilion.
So that's a rooftop above the street level?
Yes.
So that is not?
That's not down on the street.
Okay, so there's no, there's no chance of anybody kind of hitting that corner and, and taking out anybody?
No, no, nope, nope.
All right.
The architect's got to take over.
All right, here we go.
There is seating in that courtyard, in that patio area. But we also have concrete bollards that surround that whole area to protect anybody sitting out there.
How tall are they?
Some bollards?
Yes.
Three feet.
Excuse me, so we don't get back and forth, it's got to come through here, not so much, anybody from the audience? You all set, Paul?
Yeah, and then, yeah, I mean, because we're on the traffic, we asked about the traffic, so on the traffic, yes.
Okay, if I understand, you agree everything they've done traffic-wise and you're all set?
Yeah, so then a couple of recommendations that we made in, in our review letter, but yes, I think.
You want to just repeat them so we have them, so?
Sure. I think on our end with the recommendations of having the advanced signage along West Street for the, for the new crosswalk location, it was additional signage along the pickup and drop-off area, both the do-not-enter, enter here one way and then limited, you know, time parking or no parking with fifteen-minute maximum, whatever those signs might look like. And the last recommendation was, again, with the trip generation, should that change to retail, which it sounds like it won't, and we agree with the trip generation presented in their response to comments, but should it change to retail, having, having a new analysis?
All right, the first two, they're going to have to put on the plan. The other one would be, would be a condition of the decision. Just so everyone understands, is typically we add a condition that says if there's any problems with traffic, accidents, police, it can be revisited with the board and changes made. So that's always, done that with the bigger ones or the ones that have some impact, not when you're out in the woods or anything. So that would be something that would have, so if it doesn't work, there's an opportunity to go back at it. Okay? For, I will, just for traffic, anybody in the audience have any questions on traffic? Because I'm trying to keep it to each narrow.
Yes, actually.
You have to come up?
I do have Lucy McNamara, Clear Pond Drive. I do have a PowerPoint that will have two very brief, like fifteen-second videos to sort of illustrate some of the concerns. But would you mind if I went up there and pointed some things out?
You going to point it or? Do I want all those little?
Okay, so Spring Street comes up here, okay? And you have an exit here, which is kind of blind when you drive there. I know you guys say there's good sightlines, but what happens is when people go out from under the train bridge, they accelerate, even though this is a twenty-five mile per hour area. And in the traffic study, it said the average speed was thirty-five miles an hour. So you've just took a crosswalk and moved it ten feet this way. Now I will tell you from observing the pedestrians that go from the train station over, you're giving them ten less feet of safety because people accelerate. I know, Carl, you don't agree, but I live there. So as I was filming people crossing, I was watching how cars would accelerate as they came under the bridge. So you'll see in one of the things I have, not cars accelerating, but some of the problems that come up with crossing in this area and the traffic from Spring Street in particular. So I, I'm very happy that you're looking at the area for safety. I hear it so much in what you're saying. But this is blind. And when I hear that there's going to be a pergola here, I wonder if that's going to take out some of the sight that's here. And then you have these people who are coming out on the other side of that curve, this group coming from the train accelerating. You try to take that left-hand turn there, I think, Philip, you're very correct. That's a risky, risky thing. So those, I mean, subjective, I'm not a traffic person. I did spend a bunch of time on the phone with Mass DOT and Samuel Hawkins of District Five, wonderful guy, very helpful, who explained like Tuesday through Thursday is when you do the studies and what the standard practice. who explained like Tuesday through Thursday is when you do the studies and what standard practice, things like that. But this is our big concern, is this curve and the sight lines, because the stop is back from the corner here. So you have to ease out to see around. And there's nothing that's corrected that. I like that the buildings moved back a little bit. Thank you very much. But that doesn't take away from that, the physics of that curve and the problem that it presents to people. And that's one of our big concerns. So thank you very much. There's more of them.
Anyone else on traffic? Got to come up, name and address, please. Oh, never mind. I didn't see you. Just yell.
I have a stage voice, no problem. I just wanted to go back with the, with how they were talking about the in and out there and it was, who are, you know, quick drop-offs, possible packaging. It doesn't address where to the moving trucks, and I'm assuming they're going to be like box trucks for one and two thousand apartments. Where do they come in and where do they go out, especially when there's turnover? And is there enough space to handle the turnover of two or three incoming renters and two or three outgoing renters? And where is that, where does that happen? We just want to make sure it doesn't happen on the street like it happens down the street when people are moving into the other apartment building.
Now, with the drop-off, pickup or the drop-off line on West, we have over sixty feet of queue line for two vehicles to pull up and do a move for a potential tenant.
So you mean two box trucks, two trucks, not cars? When people move, they usually use like some kind of small box truck, well, not a big house moving truck, but I'm just thinking, is there enough, is that where you expect it to happen? So on the first of a month, you could probably put four or five box trucks in there for people to arrive?
Well, we could easily fit two up on the drop-off line on West, and the down below in the garage, we could fit another two in this general area easily. So that's a good stop with four, and then get into the path.
So you, you feel confident that they will not park along the street? Don't count it.
Because that's what actually does.
No, 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 come on, we're taking this one at a time, please. As far as where they park, if they park on the street, police, come get them. It's an enforcement issue is what it is. As a college kid, I used to move. I ain't parking across the street. I'm going to get as close as I can. That's, they're probably the least amount where you got to worry about parking away. They want to be right near the door, but that's an enforcement. If it's outside, you call the cops. And I'm sure inside, they're going to make, have to make accommodations because guess what? If you can't get all the moving trucks in there, they're going to have new tenants screaming at them. So that's going to be something internal. That will end up working itself out, I would say, but based upon what I think what you guys said is there is room right now at least for the six-wheel trucks.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions we had? Want up?
Lucy McNamara, Clear Pond Drive. A lot of the moving trucks are more than twelve feet tall, so they can't go under the West Street train bridge. They have to come down 1A and take a two-hundred-and-seventy-degree turn up Spring Street. So for them to go onto West Street and then turn around to that driveway, I just wonder about the physics of that. I think they're going to want to know that there is parking for themselves under the building. But there is no way to get from West Street down if you're a truck that has a height over twelve feet. They have to use Spring Street.
And most of your moving trucks are twelve feet or under. And the only trucks that don't use the bridge anymore are the concrete trucks coming out of Russo, because all the concrete trucks are thirteen-six. Trailers?
My moving company's truck was twelve feet six.
Okay, well, then if your moving company has, well, forethought, did know that they can't get there.
Well, I gave them specific directions that brought them to Spring Street.
Okay, but my, my point is that's the moving, that's their issue. You can't move the bridges.
True, true. There is no signage by the bridge to tell them what the alternate route is when they meet that impediment, which would be nice to have some signage by that bridge to say, hey, you can't go under here. You've got Spring Street or, or some other, or Norfolk Street, but I digress. Thank you.
I would assume, I would assume the moving companies kind of look at that ahead of time, especially that bridge, if they know they're going next to that one.
I, I would hope, I would hope.
All right, any other questions we got in traffic before we move on?
I don't know if this is related, but are we sure the fire trucks gets under that?
Yeah.
Does?
The bridges exist, John, so there's nothing we can do.
Well, the new one, new ladder.
Yeah, I know, but it's, yeah, they all fit under it. Right, Carl?
I believe the ladder has a height of eleven feet eight inches.
Yeah, the trail dumps still can make that.
I'm confident the fire department knows the height of.
They don't like to.
The bridges and the height of their truck, and they would maneuver it appropriately.
But.
The middle ones are short, Mike.
But regardless, we're not, we don't control the bridge heights and where they, how they come and go from the site. All we control is within the site. We hope that people come and have enough, you know, use their GPS and probably be the same guys who go on Storo Drive. You all set, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, moving on, and we did, we didn't have any other questions on architecture. I, I will ask, we skipped over that. Audience, anybody in the audience have a question on what the buildings look like or what they were proposing?
Yes.
So when we were looking at safety, there are two videos I wanted to show to demonstrate what we're experiencing on Spring Street. So in this particular video, you notice it's one of those with the oncoming light. I could have taken this video like hundred cars all day long. That's one of our problems that I have here. The next one is, if you notice this pedestrian, notice how she's in the crosswalk? And she says hi.
Hi.
So we talked about West Street and our concern of the curve. For the facade, if you notice where the building is, across from it are houses. The houses have clappards. This is what this building will look like. Now, if you're down by Conrad's, there's a building being built, but it really fits into the facade of the neighborhood. They've really taken some time to look at what's the roofline, what's, the plating on the buildings and everything, and made it tie into the neighborhood. This one doesn't tie into the neighborhood. The train bridge, twelve feet. That's what I'm looking for. That's what that sign says. I just wonder if, I'm saying this lightly, not strongly. CrossFit Engineering was used for architectural maintenance in some aspects, and CrossFit Engineering was used to collect data for a traffic study. Is that misstated? Yes. Okay. So we're requesting more study of West Street, Spring Street, and the pedestrian and the stuff for pedestrian safety. Please. It's what we're requesting. I know it may not be great. I hear that there's stipulation is there's going to be, if there are future problems, it will be looked at again. I don't want any problems. I am a pharmacist by training. I'm very risk adverse. My point of view when I was evaluating patients was to evaluate, to avoid complications. And so as I look at this development, which I know will occur, there will be development on this one. I want it to be developed in a way that is safe for all the people using that area. And as I pointed out, the position of the new position of the crosswalk, which I understand dividing two crosswalks, I think it sort of takes away some reaction time for people who are crossing when other drivers are accelerating.
Actually, you should be at the microphone, actually, because I don't think, because people aren't going to hear you at home.
Oh, okay.
So what's going on is there's acceleration of traffic when they come out from under the train bridge up the hill to West Street. What's supposed to be the traffic speed is twenty-five miles per hour. In the study, it did say that the average speed was thirty-five miles an hour, which means people are not following that speed. There's one sign as you cross the intersection with Elm and West Street where it says twenty-five miles per hour. Then you go past the apartment building and you head to the bridge, and there's nothing else to reinforce that we're still at twenty-five miles an hour and not supposed to be accelerating. In the study, they said the average speed was thirty-five miles an hour. That's ten miles greater than what that area should have, especially since we're increasing the concentration of residents. So that's where our concern is coming from. Now, I wish I had a traffic consultant other than the guy from Mass DOT who is very nice, but said, I can't give an opinion. I wish I could find someone who could give the studied opinion. But living there, it is something that is a possibility of happening. And the reason I know that.
This is from. Okay, this is from the Waffle Police Department. This is the number of traffic incidents around the train bridge. Let me repeat that. This is from the Walpole Police Department, and it goes from January first of two thousand twenty-two to the present. It's looking at traffic incidents at the train bridge on West Street. The first line says collision with motor vehicle in transit. There were five instances. The second one is collision with parked motor vehicle. There was one instance. Collision with a pedestrian. There was one incident. And collision with the bridge, there were three. This is an area that is active. The police have actually coined a phrase. Instead of using Sturo, they used Plimpton. So, because there's also a Plimpton train bridge. So they're very aware of accidents that occur around the West Street train bridge.
And that is the summary of the presentation from the residents for today.
Okay. The issues you bring up are not related to us. If they're going thirty-five, then the police should be called and they should be writing tickets. That's an enforcement issue. So if that, that is done, that, that should be done. You do have a good point, the fact that there is no other sign for twenty-five, once you do that little S turnaround, I agree with that. But you have that and the cops ticketing once in a while, I think that could solve the problem.
Is that to go to the selectmen then, as far as adding a sign?
Yeah, but you should also talk to the police. I would go there first and say.
Go to the.
They're going thirty-five. What do you think? Are you going to give them a ticket coming that far away? If you got a ticket, I got a ticket, you go, where's the sign, right?
Right.
But if there's one right at the bridge, they can't.
Right.
Start, start there. They make sure you're down them on Tuesdays, but at least you've got a place to start. I agree with the, the speed sign. There is, it's absent from.
And then if we want advanced signage, like blinking signs at the walkway? I mean, I would perfect, perfectly clear, I would prefer a traffic light, but that goes to selectmen also?
Yeah, because our standards, if there's, the blinkers were the standards, they only have to comply to the standards.
Okay.
If they, if that was the town standard, that would have to be on the plan.
Okay.
Anything above and beyond, you know, it would be up to them or whether it would help this whole situation here. The other thing that will help the situation, I will say, looking at it, right now, you walk down Spring Street and it's dead. But now you're going to have a crosswalk coming down West Street. Now you'll be able to see the people. That might clean, that's a dead spot, we all know. It's.
Yeah.
You go there Halloween, it's a big, it's a dead spot. So this may help it, but as far as I'm a hundred percent on, agree with you about the sign. And they should put one up there because that is a long way, a ways, and especially coming under the bridge. I, what's it further? Down by, does it still stay twenty-five? Is there another one further?
Yep, it's twenty-five.
Yeah, I think that's why most people do it. I agree, so start with the police, see what they say, and maybe they'll do both.
Okay.
Throw a sign in and do, and do some ticketing or whatever.
Okay.
Tell me when they are so I don't go that way, please. All right, thank you. All right, now, with traffic now, back to the site. You, where's my site guy? Oh. All right. Now, you've gone over the, all the issues in, in the plan, so now it's, we'll open it up for questions, comments. We've done a bunch of them related to traffic, I know, but we got to do the rest of it. So Paul, do you want to start with this? If you have any questions, comments?
I mean, again, my only comment, Jack, was about the, the people sitting out in the front. But if, you know, I don't know if there's so many concrete balusters that they have to have for, you know, for safety.
Typically, they're a little less than six feet, so a car can't blow through it.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, it looks like they've addressed that. Other than that, Jack, I have nothing.
Kate?
Exactly how many units are there? A hundred?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, okay. Are you using the buffer? Is the buffer empty?
Uh, the residential buffer along the rear of the property.
The buffer is on, yep.
We are including two rows of trees on that, and also using some of that space for underground stormwater renovation. And the landscaping plan.
I think the buffer is supposed to be empty. So how come you're using it if it's supposed to be empty? It's the buffer.
It's my understanding that it's supposed to be used for landscaping?
No. Buffer is, if you read it, you don't touch it. Buffer is the buffer. So if there's nothing there, you wouldn't have to do anything. So if there's a buffer, so you just take twenty-six feet from the back of the property and you don't disturb. It's a no-disturb buffer. There is something in there that says the plan board could waive partial, if so deemed.
I do, not that you know of, but when we were here in one twenty-one, what we proposed for buffer was what was.
It was a different project.
Uh, discussed and vetted and.
Yeah, but you didn't say you're doing all that stuff. You put trees in there, I know, just to help, but per the bylaw, it remains under, buffer's undisturbed. Typically, what people do, they'll put trees behind the buffer on your property. Or if it doesn't make sense, is it makes more sense that maybe you put them on the other side of the buffer, that would be, but you try to make the, the. other side of the buffer, that would be, but you try to make the, the buffer should stay untouched.
So if we remove the trees, there shouldn't be a problem?
No, you can't. They're putting in their drainage.
Oh, irrigate, yeah.
You can't, you can't, you can't. The buffer's just be, just an ugly looking piece of property. That's what it is. You can't touch. Unless, you know, if you had to move a few feet or something to that effect, but they want the buffer, it's undisturbed so that you have a, you look out your window, you can't see for 20, the 26 foot from your property to what they're doing over there hasn't changed. Doesn't mean it's pretty, doesn't mean, it could be sand, it could be dead grass, it could be trees, but the buffer is the buffer. It's not supposed to be disturbed. Unless there's something specific you're doing that might, you know, but it appears you guys are using the whole buffer, right? So basically, when you, the day I walk out there, everything's gone, right? All cleared, grubs and gone. Yeah, that's, that's taking the buffer away. It's not the purpose of buffering. You're never supposed to take it away.
Would it be okay if I pulled up the definition, just for...
Definition on our...
Yeah, oh, unless you're...
I'll go, I'll go left.
Just for...
Section 5G. Give it to Kate. Yeah, 5G.
Section 2, section 2.
No, I did work.
So it's number, it's number 2.
It's on page 38 of 128. What do you got, something different?
I got page 40.
It's 38 on the new, the new version as of May 2024. Yeah, there it is, yeah. Yeah, except as may be specifically permitted by the planning board under a site plan review, buffer zone land shall not be disturbed during construction or thereafter unless planting or loaming is required. No natural growth of trees and shrubs, which tend to properly screen the view, shall be removed, nor shall the contours be changed unless to provide through proper landscaping practice and design, a hill relevation to properly screen the view and make, and to make appropriate plantings upon any such hill or elevation. And it continues on after that, 2, 3.
Okay. So can you just...
You need to go through section 4 as well, which is...
Mr. Chairman, under section 5G2...
Yep.
It seems like we would need to get a waiver. It says, as, I find it very hard to read this part, but except as may, thank you, except as may be specifically permitted by the planning board under a site plan review.
Yep. I agree with that, but what you got to read up a little bit further, Nadine, is it says the planning board may waive these buffer requirements to allow smaller buffers. It doesn't say wipe it out.
Right.
This is just boom. If you had to put a pipe three feet into the buffer, not a big deal, you plant a couple of trees, but you're using the buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
It's a disturbed buffer today.
But you're using it, don't you get, isn't that for your drainage and stuff?
Correct.
So it's up, yeah, but it's, but you're using it as part of it. And it's the reason, one of the reasons this in there, if you live next to it, at least you know you're not going to see any, and like I said, if this tree is fine, but you're not going to see anything, but if you did it like this, for the time it takes this to get wiped out and trees back, you could be a couple of years. So that's why it gives us a waiver of certain, but when it just says a small, like, you know, it doesn't say all, and this is all.
Yeah.
You need to read section 4, goes into much more detail. So there's some provision if there's nothing there to plant trees.
I'm sorry, say that again?
There's some provision if there's nothing there, no natural growth, to plant some trees, but there's some restrictions on how that needs to be laid out.
Yeah, you can enhance the buffer.
Buffer, yeah. This may be something to, for you to look at online.
Are they filled with liquor?
Just sugar. You could put those in the fridge.
Yeah, freeze them.
Yeah. Some candy? Only if it's in the fridge. Kate, I might have some wine in the car.
Why are they digging Baker Street up again?
When will they do this next time?
So we're going to pave it again?
Do we wait? I don't know.
We've just paved for less than five years.
Summer of 20.
Yeah, in front of my house.
21, 22, 23, 24.
Four years.
Five.
I'd block my tenant getting in and out. Who's doing it?
Water department.
Oh, it's one of their own?
They run it.
No, no, I understand that, but it's, it's a contractor, right?
Yeah. That's Ferrera.
It's already four years, we'll just dig a street up and get another line in. This the second line they're putting in?
Yes.
Those are my guys, right on it. Why didn't you put it in before? Is it the water department?
Where is it? Okay. So Mr. Chairman, the way I'm reading this is that the buffer zone, what it reads to me is buffer zone land shall not be disturbed during construction or thereafter unless plantings or loaming is required. So if planting and loaming is required, then it can be disturbed.
But you also, here's the key, you're also using it for your drainage.
Yes.
It's not allowing the buffer.
Does it explicitly say that?
No, it's what a buffer's supposed to be, nothing, just a buffer, buffer, buffer.
Yeah, it says that, you know, number 2, except as may be specifically permitted by the planning board under a site plan review, buffer zone land shall not be disturbed during construction or thereafter unless planting or loaming is required.
Which it is, so we're trying to elaborate on that, that the area, because planting and loaming is required, then the area can be disturbed. And if the bylaw doesn't...
Time out. If you need it, you're adding to it, you're not ripping it out and then putting it back. It's additional to what's there, right?
What's there now?
Virtually nothing.
But if you go back to the one before, it says the planning board may, this is what you get, here's where it's going to come down to. Semantics is whether it's dead grass or who cares, it's the fact that inside the buffer, you're using your drainage.
Mm-hmm.
That's not, it's not, that's not in the buffer. You move your drainage, yeah, you can do it, but... What, there's no place to put her?
Uh-uh.
Well, you can't put it under the parking lot?
So we maximize our available underground area, or underground drainage for the lower level. But because we're cutting grade there, we have limited vertical real estate to work with underground drainage. So the vast majority of our stormwater irrigation is provided with the underground chambers from along the rear of the site. Now this area will have to be disturbed unless for the construction of our garage wall.
I get in that every time with, with all these guys. Well, how am I going to do it? Well, I work downtown Boston. I don't go out on Washington Street and say, I can't stay inside this. I don't say, Mayor Woo, sorry. No, it can be done. It's not as efficient, not as fun, but it can be done. You treat the buffer like a property line. That's how it would be done. But like I said, the biggest issue you guys got is the fact that you're using the buffer and that's not in here that you can. Unless you find something else in the book that contradicts it, but reading the buffer, that's what we're ended up with.
And the waiver we couldn't request?
Yeah, okay. It says, but only a small, it limits us. This is 100%, 100% ain't small.
Right, okay.
That's where it... And as you know, I don't go, I wouldn't grant that because I don't ever open up the applicant nor the public to a potential appeal.
Mm-hmm.
That would be easy appeal, if we give you 100%. Boom.
Okay. We're going to have to revisit it. We'll just have to revisit it because that was the only place that we could have put that system in. So we're going to have to look at it again. And just, we'll follow up from there.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would assume if you can, some other place, it shouldn't affect the whole site plan itself, because whatever goes underground, you know, it doesn't affect the up, if you can, so, okay. Anyone else in the board, any questions, comments? It appears that they're going to have to go back, Phil?
Yeah, I just have one question, you don't need to answer, but just be aware of that. One of my concerns too is where guest, guest parking is and how, at some point, you don't need to answer it now, but I just wanted to throw that out there, just know that that will be a question and...
May I, can you answer some of it now? Is that, each, each unit has two spaces and we think they'll be enough because in the one bedrooms, there'll be extra, you know, an extra space for each of those, so that should not be a problem.
If you're a guest, the other question would be, will it be easy to find the space? I've been to buildings where it's really hard to figure out where, as a guest, you could park and, you know, so that would, again, just, I don't mean to belabor it now, but...
Okay.
But that's, that would be a question, yeah, because...
Yeah, that, okay.
Sinage and just how, how it's...
You mean to direct guests to...
Yeah, if you, if you pooed in there and you were going to visit somebody, how would you know where to go and if spots are numbered for tenants and, you know, you get into all those things.
Yeah.
You have exactly two, two spots for, for apartment, then you also have, we know, the office space. That's, that's other type of guests, you know, people coming to the office who may not live there. So just, just to know that.
Okay.
Some of this might be beyond our purview, but just be good to answer it for the...
Right, in the future, I understand.
For the sake of safety, it'd be under the site plan review, safety and, and, you know, traffic.
There was something, I don't see it in this one, that I believe at town meeting they reduced it to one and a half, parking.
Yeah, one, one of the projects they...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the zoning's changed on that.
Okay.
So take a, take a look. This is not the most up to date, I don't care. Well, if it is, but I can't find it.
Yeah.
There's a town meeting changing a year or so ago, they went from two spaces to, to one and a half.
Okay.
So you said two, so...
That's how we...
Yeah, I mean, if you guys want it, that's fine, but I'm just saying the town in the last year or so changed it to one and a half.
One and a half, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Any other, you guys all set?
Yes.
All right, anybody from the audience have any questions, comments? Okay. I know we're going to need extension and...
Yeah.
What would you, what would you think?
I saw that you have hearings on October 4th and I don't remember the rest of the October...
October 17th and October 4th.
October 4th and October 17th.
Sorry, October 3rd.
So can we continue until the end of October 31st? I mean, to the end of October?
And beyond October 17th?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to have the plans into us two weeks prior. So you just cut your time down to two weeks, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, so you'll be able...
That doesn't seem right.
So you're going to...
The scale in this doesn't seem right. If you can check that. It's supposed to be one inch equals two...
Kate, when do they run out of time?
The 30th of September.
Okay. You give, okay, if you make it, you make it, you don't, you don't, but we'll do, I'll give it, we'll give you an extension, make a motion to allow the applicant until October 31st, 2024. Extension.
Second.
So second, Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we're on the 17th? So we'll put you on the 17th?
We're on the 17th, okay.
If you're ready, you're ready. If not...
I can continue.
You got to show up and give us another extension.
Yeah, okay.
Because the next one won't be until November. All right?
Yep.
It's 7:10.
At what?
7:10.
7:10.
All right, this meeting will be continued to 7:10 on October 17th. There will be no further notifications, okay?
Thank you.
And Nadine, if you, if you guys, if you can't make it, or you know, well, we'll know ahead of time, but if something comes up, let Kate know, so if anybody wants to call in, so whoever show up, because you just couldn't get it.
Right, okay.
Be fair to neighbors and stuff. Right.
Right.
Says one.
It's parking.
It was a chat, wasn't it?
Yeah, but they changed, I always look at the back. I thought this is a cheat sheet thing. I know we did it last year.
I don't know, that's...
All right, Nadine, here are yours.
Yep.
Janice, two, special permit, yes, site plan is brand new.
For what?
For Jitan Hotel.
Oh, special permit.
He's opening it tonight.
Yep.
It's time for a Twix.
Do it. I'm going with Kate and I will be back a little bit later.
Maybe not.
Maybe 10?
Maybe not.
It's like a diet five.
And normally I don't get home in time. But I had a single round tour, so everything is checked out, so...
I think we got those, though. What are you different? Is that the same?
I think it is the same, yeah, yeah. We got, we got one?
Yeah. Kind of disappointing to empty it out. You're not. You guys ready, I'll read the two.
We are, yes, yeah.
All right. Okay. Those here by giving a public hearing Thursday, September 19th at 7:20 in the main meeting room on the site plan from Jitan, is that how you pronounce it? Jitan. Hotel management, 495 Westgate Drive, Rockton. And DV Realty Partners, case number 2410, with respect to property located in Providence, Turnpike Route 1, assesses map 57 parcel 30, highway business, resource protection district three, applicant seeking site plan under section 13, allow construction of a hotel with associated parking, stormwater, utilities, lightings, as shown. So that is open. And as we run these kind of concurrent, because it crosses over, we now have, we'll open the public hearings for Thursday, September 19th at 7:21, main meeting room for a special permit application to the Jitans. Maybe I screwed that up again. For case number 2411, respect the property located in Providence, Turnpike Route 1, assesses map 5730, zoning district highway business, resource protection three, and seeking a special permit under section 12 of the zoning bylaw, which relates to Walpole Resource Protection Area 3. With that being said, we are open, and if you'd like to give us the overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam clerk, town engineer, Bill O'Connell for Jitan Hotel Management. I have the pleasure of representing Jitan Patel, who was the president of Jitan Hotel Management this evening, this evening. And I also have the design engineer, Scott Rogers from JK Holcomb. We appreciate the board's time tonight, and we're respectfully requesting a site plan approval, as Mr. Chairman had referenced, under section 13, and a special permit for greater than 50% impervious cover, under section 12 of the zoning bylaw. Just by way of background, the application is for a four-story, 119-room avid brand hotel at 2375 Providence Highway, Route 1 South. There's an existing hotel there now on a 2.43 acre portion of, of the parcel. The parcel is approximately five acres. And there's a, currently, the project has been improved, the lot, the parcel with the Home Suites, there's an existing Home Suites II hotel with parking and a gravel parking lot on the east side. The, the site is an HB, the zoning site is in an HB district, the use is allowed. And the history is that the, this board approved the existing hotel, the Home Suites II hotel, early in 2016 for the same relief. That has 116 rooms, I believe, with 116 parking spaces. This board had, had also approved it for an 8,000 square foot retail pad at the time. My client never developed that retail pad. So that's what was approved in 2016. So this evening, I have Jitan here to speak about the, the avid hotel concept, the market, the economic benefits, if the, if the board wants to hear about the economic benefits to the town, from the existing hotel, the Home Suites Hotel, you know, the, the customers that, that frequent the hotel, and, and also the projected avid hotel. And I have Scott here from, again, from JK Holcomb, who's, who's been the point person and can speak to the plans and his work with the engineering and the status of where we're at with, with the town engineer, with Concom, with the other town departments, water and sewer, and the fire department. Scott, again, you already have the, the rendering from the architect, DJS Architects, who could not be here tonight. So we're here to answer any questions, to address any concerns that you have, and I'm going to let Scott speak to those issues. And I don't know if, if the board would consider Jitan just introducing the concept and what's there now and the benefits of the town, that would be greatly appreciated. Thanks, Chairman.
Question for you start. You did the original, not you, Bill?
Uh, yes.
You were here before?
Yeah.
Okay. This is my own. Did you guys make sure you looked at the previous decision and kind of, not merit it, but to make sure everything's in the same? Because nothing's changed. It's not zoning or anything we have here. So what you had back in 2016 should work now. That's all I'm saying, is you always want to go back and look what we had for that. And the other thing I caution everybody is, this is one parcel, so the whole thing's in play. I know you're going to take it separate, but as long as you, you know, you get the right number of pocket places here, you treat this like a whole separate one, it works, but you've just got to be a little warrior of that.
Understood, understood your honor. We have discussed that as far as future saving of your life.
That's why I'm laughing, that is great.
He likes that.
Wow!
Jack's very happy right now.
You got it. You wore me some robes.
Bill, there's a $20, there's a $20 bill waiting for you outside.
He knows what he's doing.
Yeah, of course he knows what he's doing. He's never done it. You know what, I've been in court, I've been in court too much.
That was not a mistake.
I apologize, I've been in court too much this week.
Oh, I love that. That's better than King or anything.
But, but to your point about sanitation, so if, you know...
But I just want to make sure you guys went back to it and everything.
We appreciate that, so thank you.
And, yeah, more than interested to hear, so you're not making enough money off of parking at Patriots, James, huh?
Well, I mean, when we picked up the parcel, well, Jitan Patel, Jitan Hotel Management, DV Realty, when we purchased the, the five acres of land, we, you know, we, we always wanted to develop something else on the other side of the site. You know, over the years, we've, you know, looked at a few different options for the site. You know, initially, we wanted to do retail, but, you know, when, when we started to price it out and really look at the comp set, we realized that, you know, there was a good number of vacancies up and down Route 1, especially through COVID, which didn't make the project viable. This hotel, the Home 2, has, you know, surpassed our expectations, and, you know, we've been very happy with it. You know, we've had, you know, some good years, and then obviously, you know, the entire hotel industry was affected by, by the pandemic, but, you know, we're hopefully past all that now. And, you know, when we look at the site and we try to figure out what the highest and best use is, in our opinion, for, you know, for what we're good at, we figured it would be for another hotel. Currently, the Home 2 Suites, if anyone's familiar with the concept, is more of an extended stay type of product. So, you know, we get, you know, business travelers that are in the area working on projects, we get people that are, sold their home and waiting for, you know, their next home to be ready so they can move. We've gotten people that are between renting apartments, a little bit of everything. But, you know, what we find becomes our operational issue is that, you know, there's a lot of concerts, there's a lot of events, there's games, and when we get teams in-house, we get sports, you know, groups, we get people coming to a concert, they stay one night, they stay two nights max, and then they check out. And the room size is fairly large. So it, it's quite a bit of work for us to, to get, you know, the rooms turned around in time for the next concert, you know, especially when these events are playing two, three nights in a row. So this concept here is more of a, I wouldn't say economy product, but it's more of a smaller room size. They're generally around 250 square feet per room, stand-up showers, you know, LVT flooring, so it's a real clean concept. But most of the programming is in the public space, so there's a lot of seating areas, grab and go breakfast, and like, you know, areas for people to work on their laptops. And then, no, we don't, no restaurant, we don't serve alcohol, we won't be actually doing much cooking, it's more of a grab and go style of breakfast. But, you know, it's a real simple concept and smaller footprint than the Home 2. But it's proven to work in other areas. This would be the second one in New England. The first one was built in Revere, which actually, Scott, who will also speak, was the engineer on that project as well, so he can give you guys a little bit more background on that. The architects are not here, so I can try to explain a little bit of, of the building and the materials, but, you know, the height wise will be the same as the current hotel that's there. The exterior of the building will be Eiffel. We're doing light gray, dark gray, red, and aqua, which are the standard, brand standard colors for the brand, and that's what helps them stand out. The first floor, which you'll see from the renderings, it's a lot of glazing, so just trying to bring a lot of the natural light into the public space. And a lot of that is to just try to bring the public space and the exterior of the hotel, just to give it some more, make it feel like there's more space. Our guest rooms are going to be 119 rooms, which is going to be a mix of kings, double queens, and ADA rooms. The current Home 2 project, from the day that we've opened, has generated about 1.4 million in lodging tax revenue to the town of Walpole. And again, 1.4, we, we opened May of 2018, pandemic 2020, 2021. For this project, we expect to generate, and just in lodging tax revenue, around $200 to $225,000 a year. And also, we look to employ, hopefully around 20, 20 people, full-time and part-time. But that's, any questions for me? Otherwise, I can pass it off to Scott, and you can...
Yeah, you can pass it off the, but my own opinion, personal opinion, you're the only business type that flourishes with the stadium. Everyone else kills them. People always say, "Oh, have a stadium, have a stadium." No, I've been here forever. And as you know, if you were trying to sell beer, potato chips, whatever, even look at Pappaginos, they got to shut down, right? For you, this is good.
Well, I mean, we're looking forward to it.
Well, it's been good, because you're a hotel right next to all the events, and people want to stay at events, but during the week. So there's, you never have the same issues.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, you know, the, the next two closest properties to the actual stadium are, you know, Mr. Kraft's property, so the Renaissance and the Hilton Garden Inn, and they charge very high rates, which works as a benefit to us, because at least, you know, we'll take some of the compression out, where if somebody doesn't want to spend $1,000 a night, $1,500 a night, then, you know, we're able to accommodate them at, at our property.
Who's your night for, Taylor?
Taylor Swift was, was very good, yeah.
How much?
I don't recall.
I don't recall. Yeah, okay.
It, it was good. But I mean, you know, the tough thing with something like that was Taylor Swift came into town, brought a lot of people into town, a lot of business, and then she left, and all of a sudden, it felt like, you know, it, everyone left with her, you know? But it was fine. I mean, there was, there was some good concerts and good events last year. This year was a little bit quieter on the event side of things, and, and then September, I believe, most of the Patriots games are away, so I think we only get one, one game this year.
Next year, there'll be no concerts.
Never know.
No, because of soccer.
Oh, I thought they're, they're looking to move to Boston or Everett, something.
No, no, for the World Cup.
Oh, for the World Cup, yeah.
They're ripping out the turf, whatever is the last game, they're putting the grass in. So next year, they can't have any concerts.
Okay.
So it's going to be pretty dead, other than maybe 10 Patriots games.
My son likes Monster Jam, so hopefully, hopefully they keep that on the books.
Yeah, I always think so.
Yeah. Well, he'll be disappointed.
Anyway.
Scott?
For the record, my name is Scott Rogers from JK Home Green Engineering. As was mentioned before, the existing addition is Home 2 Suites with 118 rooms. We call that Phase 1. There are two existing curve cuts that were Mass DOT approved. Generally, the topography of the main part of the site is about 254 elevation at the, like, upper right-hand corner, and it goes down to about 242 in the northwest corner. So Phase 2 would be this four-story avid hotel. It's 12,742 square feet. As was mentioned, there's another avid hotel in Revere, Mass, on Squire Road. So this phase will be 119 rooms, and we have 124 parking spaces. Most of the parking, general parking area is nine-foot by eighteen and a half-foot spaces with 26-foot wide aisles. Now, as you can see by the, the plan, the site plan, the rendering, landscape islands throughout the entire parking areas. The main hotel entrance is in this area right here. And working with the fire department, they asked for a fire lane on the right-hand side. So we have been working with the fire department on a fire truck turnaround, the site getting in and out the, the parking areas, as well as the location of the fire department connection and the onsite fire hydrants. Generally, Phase 2 is going to have about 30% green space and 14% of parking lot green space. As far as grading and drainage, so there are two large storm tech underground infiltration systems. This one right here will basically handle the majority of the parking lot. It'll be, consist of deep-sunk catch basins connected to drain manholes, and a stormwater quality tank that will go into the infiltration system here. The second one is in this location, that will control or accommodate the roof runoff from the hotel in this small parking area down in that area. We're also providing, in the front right corner, in this area, providing a fire retention area, along with a seven-four bay, and that'll help us to kind of meet the low-impact development techniques that a lot of towns like to use. And in working with the town engineer, we've also developed a infiltration basin in the back. As you probably know, there's a pretty good slope that runs in behind Jason's path. And between the slope coming down, the grass area behind the hotel, we're going to have a couple of yard drains with a manhole, which will tie into an infiltration basin, if you notice here. All of the drainage systems are designed to accommodate the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm, and then some. As far as sediment and erosion control, we're going to have a construction exit. The Phase 2 area will be fenced off. There'll be a silt sock that'll be placed at the limit of work on the low end of the property. The existing catch basins, as well as the proposed catch basins, will have silt sacks, otherwise known as inlet protection. We're also going to put in some temporary sediment basins that'll control any sediment that goes, won't leave the site, will be contained within that Phase 2 area while it's under construction. As far as utilities, there's an existing sewer line that runs from, runs from Route 1 along this, this side here, parallel with the property line, then goes in a westerly direction back here, and then goes across land that's owned by the town of Walpole where that school is. So we'll be tying into that sewer system in this area over here. And working with the town engineer, they, he also asked that we put in a grease trap. Although I should mention, as, as Jitan had said, there's really no restaurant to speak of. When we talk about food, it's, you know, muffins and donuts and pastries and cereal, there's no real cooking to speak of, so... But we did add that grease trap. The water line posed, actually, unfortunately, the existing water line runs generally runs generally partway through the proposed hotel. So we're going to have to relocate that water line to in front of the new hotel. And then there'll be, obviously, it'll be sprinkled. There'll be a six-inch fire line, as well as a four-inch domestic line for the new hotel. Gas, telephone, electric, and data will come off of Route One. There's an existing pole off of Route One, and that'll be, it'll be underground from the pole to the hotel. Basically, the utility room, sprinkle room, is in the back left-hand corner over in this area. And we will need a permit from Mass DOT for the utility permit for the gas line. As far as landscaping, as I mentioned, we put them on landscaping within the property. Batted shade trees within the parking lot to help bring some green space in there, provide some shade. We've also provided some foundation plantings along this area over here. We've provided some evergreen trees between Phase One and Phase Two, just to kind of break up the two areas. And there are some existing trees on base for maintenance, well, some street trees. We paid significant attention to the area in the back of the site. As you know, there, we showed and located the houses along Jason's path. There is a berm, there's a higher area from their backyard, it kind of slopes up to a berm. And there's a slope that goes down towards our site. That particular berm that you see along here averages about forty to sixty feet in width. And within that berm, it's mostly maple trees, oak trees, and pine trees. We have a good knowledge of where those particular species are. So with that knowledge, we tried to implement more specific plants to two different areas, basically. On the property line up here, which is the higher part here, the berm, we put in trees such as hemlocks and American holly and some understory plantings of red denders. And then on the lower end, behind the motel, in this grass area, we put in some pine trees, some spruce trees, and also some dogwood trees. So as was mentioned, we have been working with the town. We did file with Conservation Commission for a land disturbance permit. We hope to have that permit in September or potentially October. I believe we have a meeting scheduled with the Sewer and Water Commission, and I believe that date is October twenty-eighth. As I mentioned before, we have been working with the fire department, and we will need that Mass DOT utility permit. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to Attorney Bill.
Hey, Attorney Bill. So, any questions that the board may have?
Yeah, we will, I'll read them, and then the board will ask any questions. Anybody can answer the public, has a right. So first item we got up here, border health concerns, but they recommend that trash recycling be provided per the Mass waste ban and that you need applications for any proposed food operation or for a pool. All right, from Deputy Chief, Fire Chief Allen Huber. I don't know if these were back, oh, September, we got them today. We find the proposed fire lane acceptable, recommend signage be posted. We request a hydrant to be added in the front of the building, preferably on island near Spark forty-one slash twenty-six. Landscaping should be chose on future growth rather than overgrowing into the fire lanes. No overhead obstruction should be below thirteen-six. And mulch, you can't use with an eighteen-inch, just anything compostable or any portion of the building. So, I don't have anything from police sewer water, sewer water or conservation. Are you? You don't have any?
No, but back there, Wednesday night, the twenty-fifth, for a continuation of the land disturbance.
But you don't have, you have no?
No, I'm not telling you. Oh, sorry, no.
It's dry. Lucky you. All right, the only other thing I have, yeah, you'll have to get the police at some point. They should have already been here. Kyle has his, if you want to read yours, Kyle?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I delivered a memorandum, September seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. It's a fairly typical site plan review. We made comments about additions of things to the cover sheet, moving endorsement blocks from one place to the other where we like to see them. Some notes on the plan. I'd like to see, as always, demonstration of conformance with zoning, particularly with the landscaping on the parking. Everything else looks to be in order. You know, we have the usual comment, actually, in here, we're recommending moving the drainage systems per the test pits that were done. You know, some other plan comments, also some comments on the water lines and fire lines and whatnot. Fairly, like I say, fairly typical. I'm going to say this, I'm going to cut it short rather than spend a lot of time highlighting this. Almost everything in this memorandum has been addressed. We've already seen it in other set of plans that were submitted to the Conservation Commission. So pretty much everything in this review is done. There's really nothing, I'll almost treat it like it do a town meeting. If you have any questions about these comments, please ask, but it's really almost already addressed. The drainage, they're still with the Conservation Commission. We've seen test pits, I note that in the letter. And the drainage, they've got two good-sized systems, as Scott Rogers outlined in his presentation. We're really just working on getting a drainage report cleaned up so that it notes the reduction in rates and volumes that are needed, both under the site plan and the Aqua for special permit, and that the backup to that is the way I want it. But that's really one of the most outstanding items. The site design came in very clean to start with, so if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, one question, you said, Kyle, the plans we have aren't discounted, as you said?
Correct.
All right, so the next meeting, we're going to have to see them.
That's right.
Okay.
But I didn't, you know, they filed, the applicant filed, and in the meantime, there were also conservation review going on, so it's a little ahead of you. But I didn't want it reviewed to a set of plans that you have not seen yet.
No, no, that's fine. It's just for our clarity is, the set that's already floating around has already addressed what you had.
It does, most of it, ninety-five percent of it, yes.
All right, that's fine.
So there's not a lot of heavy lifting left here.
Okay, John?
No, the first comment I had is on Kyle's list, the scale of the locust map is off. You can't beat it, for one thing. You mentioned one and two-bedroom rooms, is that correct? Or I misunderstood what you're saying.
Just rooms with either a king bed or two queen beds. And then per code, having ADA of each of those. So, you know, ADA king rooms and ADA queen, queen rooms.
I noticed it looked like three larger rooms, one per floor, is that the ADA ones?
Yeah, if they're the larger rooms, they should be the ADA rooms. Unless if it's the, you know, the storage areas, but, um, yeah, those are the ADA rooms.
The big ones towards the end of the building, yeah?
Yeah, so if it's, they're usually stacked.
Yeah, there's three of them, yeah. One on each floor, it looked like. Are there additional ones beyond those three then?
Yeah, there's, there should be four king ADA rooms and three queen, queen ADA rooms.
Okay, I see a bigger one down there.
And then there'll be ADA rooms with roll-in showers, and then there'll be hearing impaired and vision impaired ADA. So they'll have the strobes, yeah.
Okay. We've already looked at, you know, is there going to be charging all the drainage back into the soil, so a lot coverage is, won't be an issue?
Yes, yes, that, there are two substantial systems designed. But like I mentioned, we're still working on verifying the calculations.
Okay. Will the parking for the two units be more or less separated? Is there like a dividing line where the parking for the existing hotel and the parking for the new hotel, you either go into one side or the other side? Or is it interconnected in some way that I'm not noticing?
So there's two curb cuts along Route One, there's this one over here, which is used for both. And this one over here is pretty much used for Phase One. But there is a landscape dial that'll kind of separate those two part meters. They are connected in this area right here, in that one spot.
Okay.
That's clearly Phase Two, and that's Phase One connected here.
Thank you. Nothing else comes to mind right now.
Phil?
Yeah, it sounds like so many other things are going to be addressed in the new plan. Just a couple of quick, simple things, though, just continuing what John just asked. So we'll, so there are, the two curb cuts are already existing. And the one, the one that's straight on to the new hotel, would that still be used for both hotels then, coming in?
The existing, this curb over here, there's pretty much a paved area that goes like this. And over here, that's paved, but that probably will be for Phase One, but I obviously hold that in the face of...
And would there be any signage for the hotel itself, or for the parking, you know, the entrance? You know, those are the things that we need to see.
Obviously, there's going to be IP signage for the abbott hotel. There's going to be, you know, stop signs and stop bars and stuff like that.
So those are the things we would normally see on the... And then the, the other question, so the, you know, it said light plan will be by others, but I guess you're going to be able to address that too. Oh, the light plan, I think in the comment that Kyle had, it sort of would be addressed by others.
No. If I did make that comment, I was an error. There is a lighting plan. It came in, it was not in the set, I think it was a loose plan.
Oh, so there's one, there will be one when we get the revised plans.
Yeah, there is, and actually, it, it's very reasonable. There's a little splash over to the east, but I don't think that's a big, what I mean, you know, a little bit of lighting that goes beyond it, but it's, I don't think that's a big deal here. I don't know if you received it in your package or not, but there is one.
Not that I saw, no. Yeah.
We can provide that, and the lighting company that actually designed Phase One is the same one as designed Phase Two.
Yeah, so those are all the things that, you know, we would need to see. And it sounds like we're going to see them when you do the, you know, the next iteration of the plan.
Through you, Mr. Chair, of course, and not to interrupt you, Phil. If you get that lighting plan and get it as part of the plan set, it probably would be a good thing, you know, in a title block on the plan set.
And then the snow plan, you know, the snow removal, you know, those are all the things that we would normally see. So you, you know, and as the chair said, if you look at what you did for the first hotel, you know, you just want to follow the same, the same pattern. It looks like a good plan, and, you know, certainly, thank you for presenting it.
Kate?
Yeah, I'll hold my comments for many things.
Well?
Just a quick question, and again, I know all about the, you know, drainage and all that stuff. Is the elevation from Phase One and Phase Two and that little strip that you said that are going to kind of separate, is that all, is that even slightly tilted towards one side or the other of the lot? Now that we have to treat it as one lot, although you have two phases, do you know what I'm saying? So that center line there, how's the elevation, is it?
So this Phase Two is slightly higher than Phase One, I'd say, it's anywhere two or four feet higher.
All right, so Kyle, that will be taken into consideration for the drainage, correct?
It is, yes. They really have to make it higher. I can't remember, Scott, if you have a wall along that easterly property line or not, but, but no, the easterly one.
Not over here.
Not over there, so they match that. But no, the drainage, there are two, there are a number of low points, actually, that's comments in the latter, high points and low points. No, they, it's pretty well done. And it will be, right now, that site cheats into the existing parking lot, and it ends up going to the northwest corner, and it's going to fix all that. There's a little bit erosion down there because in this interim, it's more water there than there should be. But this will fix it all.
Elsa?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, just first, from a business standpoint, you seem to be separating. Is that a business, what you want to do, the two hotels? It's kind of like giving a feel of two separate types of hotels?
Yeah, we, so another one of our properties, we have essentially three hotels in one, almost, you know, one spot. But, yeah, we do it for the guests and also for the brand. And so one is Intercontinental Hotel Groups, and then the other one is Hilton. So existing hotels Hilton, and they typically don't like us sharing parking fields and whatnot. You know, it's been done, but they always want to make sure that it's separate, unless it's two of their own products.
No, I can understand why you want to do that. The next question, it's, once again, it's more of business. Have you been designed that if you ever want to split it off, you could?
Yeah, and I can speak to whatever you want to tell us.
Yeah, I mean, you know, eventually, we would want to have it as two separate entities.
No, no, I, yeah, but if you own both of them, it doesn't matter, it's all on one lot. I'm just saying, if I came up to you and offered you a hundred million for the existing hotel, you'd say, "Yeah."
I wouldn't say no.
My, where I'm going with this is, this is not to do with site plan per se, but just from a business standpoint, is it, could you actually do that and put the, do an A and R for each side, and they could float on their own?
Yeah, so we're also, we're going to get a zoning opinion drafted, which we can also submit. But, you know, the Home Two was designed to be its own standalone hotel with all zoning, you know, compliance. And this other hotel, we're not using any of the infrastructure or parking, sorry, from the Home Two. So essentially, if we ever came in with an A and R, we could have two.
Well, that's my point, is as long as your new design can, what I'm saying, they both can float on their own. You could just go, and you wouldn't have to ever come back to us. That's all I'm driving.
No, we appreciate you bringing it up, Mr. Chairman. And I guess, just hypothetically, if they wanted to do it now, and I don't expect you to answer this, but, you know, I think it would probably involve, if they did want to do an A and R on both lots, and it would involve a modification of the existing hotel. I, I...
But if they all meet all the zoning, you could do it. All I'm saying is, if you're going to steal something from one side or the other, now's the time to do it.
I, yeah, yeah. If we, and if we were going to do that during this process, you know, certainly, we can, we can let you know and...
All I'm saying is, if it was me, I'd say, "Hey, guys, I don't want to have to come back because I got to take ten square feet from this and go through the whole process. I want it so that everything here is by itself, and everything here, and this is the line, and away we go." That's all.
Yeah, would you, Mr. Chairman, if we were to pursue that, would you require a new application?
No, no, you can just show it on this. All I'm saying is, but at some point, where you have your infrastructure for both, you're going to want to make sure you got enough on this side, enough on that side. It will never affect us. Okay? It would be more for you guys, you, you, all I'm saying, Kyle?
I do, the water and sewer would be shared, so they'd have to be cross easements if you did that.
Oh, that, yeah.
But the stormwater is independent. This site has its own stormwater, it doesn't really shed onto the other one to speak of. And they're independent that way, so if it meets zoning, it could be split pretty easily.
Say, for instance, you need forty thousand feet on both lots, and the left lot only has thirty-nine, two-hundred. To me, now's the time to steal from this, to put it over there. You're all one lot, you can do what you want with it, but I'm just, this is business.
We appreciate that.
Okay, Your Honor. Now, you've sat through the past one, buffer. I don't see it marked on your plan, that, I think this is thirty-foot, I believe, right? Between residential, is it marked here, or I can't read it?
It's not marked. So to address that question, there's an easement that runs along here, utility easement for sewer. There's also a utility easement that runs along the back. You can see, there's a buffer on... You can see there's a buffer on neighboring properties and a buffer on our properties.
But, okay, I understand, but you have to provide on your property. It's either twenty-six or thirty.
Well, I can only provide so much because of that sewer run this right here. So, what, what we are doing is we're enhancing the buffer zone on our property for the neighbors up here along Jason Path and then all these trees along here were also an incident.
Buffer night.
I understand the easement.
Highway business, it's highway business?
Yes, highway business to residential's forty?
Forty.
Forty feet, yeah.
All right, okay. Well, from your prop, your property line in has to be forty feet untouched. If you want to enhance it, that's another thing. The easement's there, the easement's there. But do you have forty feet that you're not touching? Meaning that you're not putting in drainage like the previous application was?
No, there's, there's not, it's forty, any of the buffer.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, adding to it.
You're adding, you're enhancing. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
But there is forty feet there from, it's hard to tell from the, I couldn't read the.
You can see, see that darker line right there? So, there's the property line, there's trees, there's a sewer line, there's a fence that there now, it's a bleed. And then there's the buffer, you know, planted on the upper side.
Okay, so the buffers, is that dotted lined?
Yeah, the big dash line right here.
From there to there's forty feet?
Yes.
And, so you got more than forty feet from the back of the hotel to the property line, correct?
Only if you count the neighbors.
No, not the neighbors. Flip your plan up again because I'm working off a half size here. See the big dark line?
Yep.
Is that your property line?
Correct, okay, and that shows the zone.
What's the difference? Okay, from there to the back of the hotel, what do you got?
That's probably eighty feet.
Okay, that's what I, yeah, okay. So, you got way more than, that's all. So, all you need is forty from the back of your property line. That's fine, but you're enhancing it. Okay.
He has to show it blatantly, right?
Yeah, as long as, could you show it on your plan to say, "Enhanced buffer," just so that anybody ever wants to know, your neighbors or whatever?
And that can be the easement too, Jack.
No, the easement's already existing, so you can't do, but they're not, they're not touching that.
No, it does show on Plan C three. There are some measurements.
Yeah, it's just, it's just hard to see. It shows the utility.
Looks like it says about fifty-two or fifty-one.
Hard to know where that really is.
Yeah. Okay, no, unless, it's because our plan's too small. If you got it there, you got it there. But, okay, just wanted, we wanted to make sure after going through the previous buffer. And.
Just, I'm sorry, just for the record, we had a meeting with the neighbors. We invited the neighbors to come and enjoy the game and obviously, none of you here tonight, so I take that for a leave there.
I agree, we did, I agree with that.
Looking at Plan C three, there's some small structure in the, I think it's the northwest corner beyond the hotel. It's a squareish figure and it looks like it's got walls around it.
So, that's the tran, this right here?
Yeah.
That's the transformer?
That might be within your setback, your buffer. Maybe you have to relocate that. I'm not sure what the two structures next to that, whether that's, uh.
Is that your dumpster pad?
Dumpsters or something.
That's the trash enclosure area.
As long as there's forty feet from the line to that edge, you're all set. But anything like that, just like you do on any building, please give us a dimension from the property line to whatever that structure is, so we know it meets the requirements.
If that is closer than forty feet, let's say it's thirty, is that something you can address with a waiver, since we're here and there?
You saw the other one, but the other thing is, it, I don't mean to laugh, but you're asking us to give a waiver of a buffer for trash. That's kind of. Yeah, if you can do, if you can position it somewhere else, you can't put it, oh, no, that's in the other pro, oh, you could do that to the left of it, but I know the trash truck can't make that. Would you please look at it and, and see, if you would?
Yes.
And, okay, that's all I have for questions or comments. Anyone from the audience question, comments?
Meeting, John Swirler, 19 Jason's Bath. So, it was eight years ago or so, we went through the diligence. They invited us off. We looked at the property and it's great, they've been a great neighbor. There's a few questions I have though about the site lighting. I guess it's still an open question of what it's gonna look like. In the current model, and I should have thought about this before, the site lighting's okay, it's like downward lighting.
And then?
Exactly right. However, the whole back of the building has the stairwells for egress escapes or going between floors. All of that is like a big beacon to my house. So, somehow, in the future hotel, if they could mitigate, like, put some film over those, over the windows, so that just doesn't come on at night when they're building the place, it's like, oh, those are just construction lights. Those will eventually be turned off because it's just so bright, you know?
Yep.
And sure enough.
Okay, I, I, yep, I understand, especially a big one like that. You guys get it, gonna do anything with that, so it is?
Yeah, I wasn't aware.
Yeah, I know, I haven't said anything before.
Either film or get it.
Well, in the existing hotel, we can frost that first, yeah.
But on this one, you get glass like that. I understand what you're saying, so it doesn't spill out there.
Exactly right. And I think it's gonna be a little bit higher. I'm further back on Jason's Bath, first house on the right. The folks that live down towards the end where the berm is?
Yeah.
I mean, that'll just kind of be right up on their house. I can only imagine. The other question I have is there, and I didn't look at the plan sheet because I was away, is there an outdoor space at all defined patio?
No.
No?
No.
Because on the existing hotel, when they first moved in again, eight years ago or so, it was an ongoing, I don't want to say chronic, but it felt like it, where, not during non-game events, of course, game day, anything happens over there or anywhere, but people would congregate to like an outside space. And they'd be, "Hey, I'll get a beer." Granted, they don't sell beer, but they get beer somewhere. And then just socializing at the hotel gets a little loud. And on, I don't want to say numerous occasions, but on several occasions, the police kind of rolled through and said, "Go back inside the building." And we were hoping that the hotel staff would have said, "Hmm, you got no drinking outside." You know, maybe game day's a little bit different. And then keep the noise down would be a great thing there. So, again, if you can educate the staff along the way.
Yeah, for sure. So, there is a bit of soft seating by the entrance of the hotel.
And that's, I think, one of our neighbors actually drove up there. It's like, really, is this where the noise is coming from? Because at one point, when the Christina's or whatever was open over there and they had bands, whatever it's called now, who knows? All that noise would come across the street and we could hear plain as day better than the concerts. Normally, we can't hear the concerts, which is just wrong. But they, you could hear the music coming over from Christina's. So, again, the, the lighting on the, the property's good, just to be able to take care of that extra noise.
No, that's, never thought about the stairways, but yeah, it is a beacon.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. And the, the windows, again, are a big space, right, probably ten-foot wide window.
Yeah, we worry about the sight, yeah. Like you said, we're worried about what you can see. It's not necessary, I'm sure they measured the lumens where you are. It's not a lot.
No.
But what you can see is different.
Exactly right. And the foliage drops down out of the trees. And again, they did a great job. They put a fence up as we recommended because we were afraid people would cut through the backyards to get over to the hotel and such, but that's been good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, nothing else? So, we got a couple of small things and if you want to have a plan or whatever for the next time, so, when's he done?
Um, the twenty-fifth of September.
Okay, we need extension. You'll be able to, you know, the two weeks rule we do, Bill?
I do, yep.
Okay, so, go the seventeenth?
If he's ready.
Yeah, you can make the seventeenth? The little stuff you gotta do?
Seven fifteen.
That other guy, he said several, good luck. That's a lot of work. He's got, it's not even the seventeenth, it's subtract fourteen days, so everything would have to be in by the third. But, but I don't think you got that much. So, we'll ask extension through Halloween?
For both.
Yeah, what?
Site plan and special permit, seven fifteen and seven sixteen.
Yeah, can we have an extension for both?
Yes.
Thirty-first, okay, make a motion to allow applicants for extension for both the site plan and the special permit up through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four?
I second, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next time, call him King.
King. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will continue this on October seventeenth?
Seven fifteen and seven sixteen.
Seven fifteen, seven sixteen. We have the other ones right in front of them, right? So, okay.
Thank you.
And that's, we can't go earlier than you guys if they don't show up, but we'll take you on time. We, we gotta do that rather than sit sometimes and look at each other. So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
All right, I want to bang these. Okay, uh, what's up with the?
Can I have the comments back first?
The what?
Comments.
Probably what the comments got?
You don't need one.
You don't need one.
Listen, when you're the honor.
You got a pan. You got a new pan.
When you're the king, the big one.
Okay, this is Kyle's letter.
King's a king till he gets home. Right? Yeah, Mrs. Beatty.
Why are you bringing me into this? What did I do? Eat some candy.
Sorry, right now, seat up, say, "I'm the king." About twenty minutes, move over.
Thank you.
Two months of seat. Okay, the first one we got there, Kate?
The last one, it's the covenant change for drum headway.
Why did they want to do it, Kyle?
There was an error.
He was, oh, the, uh, bond on drum head.
There in what?
You want the old north?
Yeah, what happened?
Uh, they evidently had the first time through the, the private way covenant mentioned the wrong two lots.
Those two answers here. All right, so this is all, so now we're now accepting, we're accepting an amended, amended covenant, so we're not getting rid of the other one, correct, Kate?
Yes.
We'll make a motion to accept an amended covenant on drum headway.
Second?
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, sustain? Give you this one, so I won't hold the others until you and John go. Kate, you're gonna have to do the notary thing right in the back.
Elsa Robbie is not ready yet. There's been some changes.
Okay.
And, um.
You want to sign ink or what is it?
No, it, it, it doesn't matter, John.
And twenty-four Marion Street. There was a bond discussion for Sudhir and I didn't, I never heard from him, so I don't know what he wants to do.
Okay, so he's, he hasn't bonded yet, correct?
No, he won't, he, actually, there was a letter in your packet that he wanted to split the bond up.
Split it up?
Didn't want to post the three sixty-one, he wanted to do two fifty and rest in cash.
Kyle, you know anything about that?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't.
In time.
Something about the bond from Marion Street?
This is what, this is what, actually, there was this.
He can do it in cash, but it'll go into a, what do you call it?
What I understand, Mr. Chairman, is that he can only get a insurance policy bond for two hundred and fifty thousand.
He can do that and he puts it in the hundred, hundred and eleven thousand will go into an escrow.
Okay.
I mean, never done that before.
I think that's what he's gonna have to do.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we, the passbook, that's in our name or whatever. Yeah, you can tell him to do that. He'll just have to set up the passbook or.
So, it'd be a passbook and an insurance bond?
Yeah.
The only question you'll have to grapple with is he'll, if he does build the infrastructure and comes in for a reduction, which one will you reduce?
Right.
If I were building it as soon as it was binded, I would be in for a reduction.
What, what do you mean, from the cash side?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
The other thing to look at is what are you getting for infrastructure, cash versus what the bonds cost?
Postage and copy.
But if you have that much money, you can do that. You certainly don't have to put a cash on it or whatever. It's a nothing. Cash is king.
Jack's chatty tonight. No kidding, jeez.
I'm chatty? All right, that's it.
Wait, wait, wait.
Let me wait.
What is postage and copy?
It's just, it comes over, it's just, it's nothing.
Do you want to go count the number of stamps you use? The number of copies? You want to be our copy boy?
I was just asking what it is. It's on the agenda.
They send it around, it's like a big, you know, they collect, they go up ten percent a year in your property taxes, but you're still counting nineteen cent stamps.
That's why you had to pick up my packet? Really?
You didn't get lost?
It was a hard block.
Today, did you?
No.
Well, that's like today, you'll be working. All right, make a motion to.
Second.
What about Elsa Robbie?
He's not ready. They've had to change something on the plan, I guess. That's what Kate had indicated, so we should be all set. So, make a motion. Anybody say second? All in favor?
Aye.